So we're gonna do about the same, what we did before. We are going to run through introductions to the candidates. They'll get two minutes to introduce themselves, ninety seconds for a series of questions, a fun game, and then they will do audience questions. So thank you all for sticking around for City Council. Before we jump in, I did forget to give a description of what the mayor does. So I think I have a quick description because I had a couple of questions. In Billings, we have a week mayor or council manager structure per mayor. So this means that the mayor serves as the presiding officer for our city council and acts as the ceremonial head of local government, but has no administrative duties. And those administrative duties are run by a city administrator. Our mayor should have a vision for our community that they're able to communicate to stakeholders and citizens, and the mayor, like city council, is and should be a nonpartisan position. Wonderful, okay. So we're gonna hop into our council forum. We are so excited that we have seven of the ten candidates here tonight who are running. Morgan will go over some of the details when I pass it over to them. But we do have bingo again. If you still have your bingo card, you can just keep playing it. We have two more gift cards to give away. Two people did win last time. Again, please wait until candidates are done speaking. If you get a bingo, or you can give it to Katie who's in the back there. You should have question cards left to write down your audience questions. But we do have more questions up at the Forward Montana table where Katie is again. And you should have seen a map inside your goodie bags. I know there weren't enough bags, but I promise we'll be sending a follow-up email. I'm sure your candidates here can describe the district or the ward they live in. But each of you, if you are in Billings City Limits, should be in one of their wards. And there are two people running for each ward. We have a website link as well where you can put your address in, which is really helpful. So you can see who's gonna be on your ballot. Okay, so starting with what city council does. So many papers, okay. City council craft and vote on city policies and budgets to represent the interests of the residents in their respective wards. They hold the mayor accountable and ensure that Billings residents' interests are represented. They drive policy that determines what our community looks like and feels like for years to come on issues like affordable housing, infrastructure, public parks, public safety, AKA they affect just about everything we do in our cities. And most importantly, like our mayor candidates, these are people who are our citizens who live here, they're our neighbors, everyday folks, who hopefully care about Billings just as much as all of you do. So again, you're going to be hearing from all of them, and we're gonna pass it over to Morgan to run through our questions. And thank you so much again.
Thank you so much, Perry. Howdy, howdy, everyone. My name is Morgan. I am a voter engagement and LGBTQ+ organizer with Forward Montana. And really excited to be emceeing the candidate forum for the city council. So yes, each candidate will do introductions, like with the mayoral. They'll each have two minutes to introduce themselves and why they're running. And we'll start with Ward One right here to my left. We are lucky tonight, we have both Mark Nicholson and David Redman here with us. And we'll have two minutes. We have our little time here. And we'll start with David. Nice to meet you. Thanks for making it. And this. I'm like, no, I'll have the mic to myself.
Hello, my name's Dave Redman. I'm a proud Ward One resident, and I'm also an Army veteran. I spent thirty-five years on active duty supporting all of you in intelligence and cybersecurity roles around the world. My last job in uniform, I was half of the two-person team that runs the National Security Agency, did that both under President Obama and President Trump. I worked on very large government budgets, and I have an accounting degree. I married my wife forty years ago, an Air Force sergeant that I met while I was in the service, and we maintained our residency in a wheat-farming community up north of Glasgow. And I moved to Billings with them in 2018. After coming to Billings, I spent five and a half years as the chief of staff at First Interstate Bank, and I was also on the board of directors at the Billings Community Foundation. After retiring two years ago, I've been volunteering, mostly doing veterans programs and veterans outreach, especially with the Veterans Navigation Network and with the Veterans of Foreign Wars. I'm running for city council because I think we need to get our fiscal budget in order. We've got some key things that city council is responsible for in ensuring public safety, keeping crime off of our streets, city services, and we also need more transparent government and affordable housing. I thank you for the privilege to speak with you tonight.
My name is Mark Nicholson. I too am a proud resident of Ward One, the beating heart of Billings. I moved here twenty-one years ago, and it's the longest place I've lived here longer than any other place I've lived. I came here as a psychiatrist. I worked for the Mental Health Center for eleven years. While there, I worked in a sort of community treatment. We took care of the sickest people in Billings with chronic illnesses. We sent case managers to their homes, sometimes twice a day, to deliver medicines. Case managers made sure that their bills were paid, their utilities paid. And I went to their homes to do my medication checks on a monthly basis. We kept them in their homes, we kept them well, we kept them off the streets. Personally, I've been married to my wife forty years. We've raised three children, one of whom is a foster child with multiple disabilities. She was born at twenty-eight weeks and spent ten months in a newborn ICU before she came home to live with us. She's still with us after twenty-seven years. I want Billings to continue to be a good home, and I think we need to do some things to keep it a good home. I want to work on less crime, more housing, and safer streets.
Thank you both so much. We'll move on to Ward Two. We have Casey Strong with us, who is running against Dennis Pittman, who did not respond to our request, and Ernest Hartman, who is sadly out of town for another event and couldn't attend. Casey, you can tell us a bit about yourself and why you're running.
Yeah, Cassie, it's a common mistake, no worries. Cassie Strong. I'm curious if anyone here lives in Ward Two? Okay, I'm gonna stare at you the whole time, okay? Just kidding. Everyone else, tell your friends. I'm Cassie Strong. I am a mom of two little boys. I work in economic development and marketing. And I grew up here in Billings in the Heights, actually, was Skyview Falcon. I moved to Missoula for a while. Yeah, go stay there. Started raising a family there, and we moved back in 2022. I am particularly passionate about economic development in the Heights. For those of you that don't live in the Heights, you might wonder what the heck's going on up there, and that's a good question, because we are seeing slow growth compared to the rest of the city on the commercial side of things. And I think there's a lot of potential, similar to what Jennifer mentioned on the mayoral debate, to bring life to the Heights and bring people to the Heights. So that's how I started this quest. And then I started to be in rooms with people like this, honestly, who really care about Billings and want to see it grow into a place where our kids will want to live someday. And so I decided, you know, I have all these opinions, so maybe I should throw my name in the hat and put something behind it. So as I said, economic development is my professional background, helping specifically women start to grow businesses around the state of Montana. And then I'm also, of course, you can't talk about Billings without talking about public safety. We want to make sure people feel safe living here, as all the candidates have mentioned. And then it's passion of mine to make sure that the city is family-friendly. So that includes supporting recreational areas, safe paths to schools, lighting of neighborhoods, all of those pieces that help grow resilient families and kids that will turn into wonderful adults. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And now on to Ward Three with Amy Aguirre.
Hi, my name is Amy. I'm a lifelong resident of Billings. I'm raised by beautiful human beings in this space, and I want them to dream of raising their own families here as well. I'm director at Angeles Piazza Women's Shopping Center. We work with women in domestic violence and addictions recovery, and in all ways that women are marginalized. I have been there for fifteen years, served as director for three. My whole career has been in the nonprofit sector. My whole heart is in community and in family and in safe center areas. I'm director of the Spanish choir at my church, formerly Our Lady of Guadalupe, now Mary Queen of Peace. I've been a lifelong member of this faith community. But like I say, I want my family to continue to raise their family here. My grandparents helped establish Our Lady of Guadalupe Church, and I want to continue to bring that legacy forward with Mary Queen of Peace Catholic Church. But as director of Angeles Piazza, my job is to collaborate. I am not a standalone person. It is imperative that we work together as community, especially to protect our creative spaces, which might be on the chopping block with our budget deficit. So if we collaborate with nonprofits, with religious communities, with civic groups, with PTAs, we can all come together and we can continue to ensure that these beautiful spaces continue to thrive. And I would love to serve as your Ward Three representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. I thought I'd say Amy's running against TJ Rogers, the incumbent, who did not respond to our request, will be here, so thank you. Moving on to Ward Four, we have Andrew Linley, who is running against Dennis Tinswell, the incoming candidate, who also did not respond to our request. So go ahead with your two minutes.
Okay, thanks. Hi, I'm Andrew Linley. I also grew up in the Heights, so I have a special affinity for it. I agree with Cassie and with Jennifer that economic development in the Heights is an important thing, and it's a great place. So if you haven't been up to 105 Brewing, go up there, it's pretty amazing. I grew up in Billings, grew up in the Heights, started high school at Skyview, and then I moved to Nye, Montana. I went to high school in Absor. Do I have any Class C folks in the house? And I came to MSUB, or at the time, Eastern Montana College, and after college, moved out to the Pacific Northwest to work in technology. And I worked for some of the biggest companies out there, Microsoft, Nike, Intel, InFocus projectors, Columbia Sportswear. It was a great time, late 90s, early 2000s, to be in tech and to be in the Pacific Northwest. But after seven years, I came home. And some of you in here probably moved away and then came home. I came home because of family. I wanted to raise my kids here. My wife and I have two kids that are still in Billings Public Schools. We have a seventh grader at Ben Steel, and we have a sophomore at Early College School. And if some of you don't know what Early College School is, you should check it out because it's a pretty amazing program that the municipal district is doing. We also have an adult son who's twenty-eight, who's married, works at Pepsi as a driver, and has a three-year-old daughter, so we have a granddaughter that's being raised here in Billings. So what I would say is, look, the future of Billings matters a lot to my family. I want to see my kids grow up here. I'd love to see them travel the world and go somewhere else for college and other things, but I want to see them want to come back. I want Billings to be a place that is a place where we can recruit people for like the new million-dollar hospital that's going up, and then our kids want to stay, and we can enjoy them as long as we all live here. So I'm Andrew Linley on the Ward Four, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. And finally, Ward Five, with us tonight, we have both Patrick Olt and Tony O'Donnell. So...
Good evening, friends. Yeah, my name is Patrick Olt. Like Andrew and Cassie, I also grew up in the Heights. There must be something in the water.
You raise good people up there.
That's right. I'm a lifelong Billings resident. I did leave for one year. It was one year too long. But I've lived here my entire life. I am a spouse, a father, and a business owner. I love this community, and I think that the reason why I got involved was because I'm tired of just having good opinions online. I think that civic service is the greatest privilege that we can engage in as American citizens, and in as fraught a time as we're living right now, it's important for us at a local level to come together as a community and work together to make the space that we live in the best place that it can be. So as somebody who's running for city council, everybody will tell you that they are committed to public safety. Obviously, that's a big, big component of what we're doing. So public safety is important to me, but I see public safety as an ecosystem. It's not just throwing more blue bodies of problems, but also finding clean, safe, and well-kept open spaces for people to be able to recreate, to be able to walk, and to be able to be out and do things. I believe in economic development, and I also want to see more affordable housing for our community. But on top of that, I think that it is particularly important for us right now to create better channels of communication inside of our city and city government. We have parts of our city government that just don't communicate. And then we have citizens who really don't know what's going on a lot of times in Billings city government as well. So I think that's a huge opportunity for us, and I'm really looking forward to bringing some new energy to city government. Thank you.
So I'm Tony O'Donnell. I moved here thirty-two years ago from San Diego, which I consider to be a badge of honor that I chose to live here rather than just being born here. So, all right, thank you, appreciate it. One guy on the ground, I like that. So I've been here thirty-two years. Moved here from San Diego. I was very much involved in civic organizations there, as well as here, Lions Club, Association for Retarded Citizens, the Head Start Model Cities, going back a long, long way. And then here, I've been active at times with the PTA, on the board of the PTA, for the whole county, and for the United Way. You know, I spent the last eight years as a Montana Public Service Commissioner. What I did there was that I voted, I'm very proud to have voted, for the least-cost utilities that the law could allow, and I'm very proud of that. The reason why is because, and that's why I'm running here, because an extra five dollars a month on utility bills is the same as an extra five dollars a month on property tax. There are people who simply cannot afford that. They will be taxed out of their homes. Besides that, you have people who are just newly into homes, and they stretch their budgets. They've said, you know, if we cut, squeeze, and trim, we can make it right here. So their property tax goes up by five hundred dollars a year, they're screwed. They can lose it all. That's unacceptable to me. One thing that I like in terms of that, that affects everybody, is in California, basically, is that the property taxes are fixed as long as you own your house, so you have certainty. I like that. Government needs to have certainty, people need to have certainty. Government should not be impinging upon people more than we could afford. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you again all for being here and encouraging us to yourselves. All right, we're going to, like the mayoral portion, have a series of long-form questions for you. There'll be ninety seconds to answer each question. Once again, when you begin, Trish will be keeping time for us. At ninety seconds, at thirty seconds, you'll get a warning, fifteen seconds, you'll get a warning, and stop. I ask that you please stop. Please stay within that, and we will not... It's always fun with first candidate forum. I am very happy you're all here. It's excitement with that. We'll have a fun portion at the end, at least I think it'll be fun, and then we'll have audience Q and A. And since we are sharing lives, think about the best way to do this. For this first round, I think we're going to leapfrog it. So we'll start with David, go to Cassie. I am so bad at things already. I'm literally looking right at you, Andrew, and Tony, and we'll start going back with Patrick to Amy to Mark. Does that make sense? Thank you so much. So for question one, given our current political climate, many young people are increasingly disconnected from and don't feel represented by politicians. If elected, what specific steps will you take to ensure that all members of our community, including historically underrepresented groups, feel fairly and adequately represented in city decision-making? So I'm with you, David.
Thank you. And I think one of the things I learned as being a sergeant, my job was always to pick up where the parents of America left off, you know, and advocate for the young folks that were in my organization, whether it was five or whether it was eighty thousand. And, you know, I would bring that experience in a way that puts forums together and opportunities for our young people to get involved. It is about building the next generation of folks that sit on the city council. If you ignore that growing element within our community from the very beginning, then you have no chance for a long-term, healthy city. I spent a lot of time in multicultural environments around the world, and I think being able to maintain those lines of communication are absolutely essential. I think I would have an open-door day policy, much like a college professor would, that would give anyone an opportunity to come in and share their grievance, share the things that they needed to work on. But once again, it's about listening, and it's about delivering on what those folks have as expectations for them.
To Cassie.
This is really important to me, and one of the main reasons why I'm running is because I want to change the mindset that you have to have all of this extra time, income, energy even, to put yourself out there to serve in a public capacity. And I would love to see more people follow me here, so we'll see how that goes. And over the last two years, I've run a program called the Rocky Mountain Women's Business Center that I mentioned earlier. It is a federally funded grant program designed to serve underserved populations across the state of Montana as they start to grow businesses. What I've learned in that role is that all of the different populations of people in Montana, different ages, different locations, ethnicities, they communicate in different ways, they gather information in different ways, they respond to different types of media and communication. And so it's important that we're continually changing up the way that we run the city council and the city government, so that we can actively reach all of those different groups in the way that they naturally receive information.
Thank you so much, Andrew.
Well, I think the first thing when it comes to engagement is that we need a council that is engaged. So that means more than just showing up every other Monday night and voting and never saying anything, right? We also need to be able to get information about what's gonna happen at council and what just happened at council. And so some of you perhaps have gone to council meetings, gone to the website, looked at the agendas or the minutes. It's not the easiest thing to do, right? We could all whip out our phones right now and find out the last twenty best actor winners from the Oscar from ChatGPT, which can't find out anything about what happened at a council. We gotta make a change to that. When it comes to making sure that underrepresented groups have a voice, we need to make sure that we're opening up spots on advisory boards for youth, for other groups of people that maybe are not well represented. We also need to make sure that council members aren't just going out into the community when it's election season, right? Doing ride-alongs with police throughout your term on council, going to visit the assisted living and retirement homes, meeting with youth. I think these things are things that need to happen consistently so that everybody is heard.
Thank you. Do you have a shot, Tony?
Yes, on the Public Service Commission, whenever there would be something decisive to vote on, like a rate increase, I would read all the thousands of pages that Northwestern Energy would supply. I'd say, okay, I understand that. What I found interesting were all the, what the poll the interveners who would ask questions. I said, I never thought about that. That's a great question. That's a really interesting way to look at things. I have a very active mind to look for those things. Now, the question says, how would you address how people feel that they're being listened to? I can't control how people feel. All I can do is make sure that people are listened to.
Thank you. Okay, Patrick?
I'm gonna have Amy get a video of me right now. I'm just kidding, but what this speaks to is we live right now in the most disaggregated media environment than we've ever lived in in a lifetime. What I mean by that is you used to be able to go to one of three news sources inside of our community, KTVQ or the Billings Gazette or Color A, and you'd have a pulse on what was going on in city government in different places. But now, people can pick and choose, and they live inside of these little silos where they choose to get their information sources from. And so I think what is incumbent upon city government right now is to meet the moment and to find ways to create ways to communicate with the public where we're at. So whether that means we hire, we fund and hire a full-time information person or media person who is posting to Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, Snapchat, if it makes sense, as well as traditional media channels. And also for people in city council to find ways to reach out to their constituents as well. I have, throughout this process, recorded videos talking a little bit about what has gone on at city council meetings or my views about things, and I've shared those. I think that if we work together as a coalition to build opportunities to communicate with our constituents, that people will feel more involved, more informed, and probably want to show up a little bit more as well.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Maybe you've noticed, maybe you haven't, but Billings is actually a rather diverse community, and it is also comprised of at least fifty percent women. So how is that reflected on council right now? Not very well. Thank you. When I look at city leadership, I want to see part of me reflected back to me. And I'm not saying I'm qualified just because I'm brown or Mexican. I'm saying I'm qualified because I represent a part of our community that is just not being represented. Thank you. As I've said, my entire career has been working with folks who walk on the margins. I walk with them in those margins. I myself have lived in those margins, and I have a perspective and experience and a lot of stories that I can bring to the table that very few other people are able to do. So I believe that my representation on council will open doors for many other folks who are currently not engaged with city government. I want to be that connection for them. Thank you.
Finally, Ward.
I'm a psychiatrist. This is where I pause and say, how do you feel? Well, as a psychiatrist, I made a career out of listening. And I think listening is very important. And to listen to voters, I've knocked on well over sixteen hundred doors and talked to over five hundred voters and listened to what they, what their concerns are about Billings. So I think I can say I've probably done that more than any other candidate. So if you want somebody who can listen, ready to listen, I expect that I would have office hours as a city councilman, and I would, of course, scan the neighborhood passports. My door would be open.
Thank you. So let's see, for our next round, for bouncing around questions, always have fun with this. We'll do a reverse. We'll start with Tony, go to Andrew, go to Cassie, go to David, Mark, Amy, and then Patrick. And I'll repeat as needed. So for question number two, housing continues to be an issue for residents in Billings. If elected, what municipal policies or actions, if any, would you advocate for to support more affordable renting opportunities for low and middle-income folks? Start with you, Tony.
Thank you. It seems to me that, from what I hear from builders, who are whatever government program that they operate under, whatever laws they under, they're the ones who have to build the housing, is that they keep on saying that regulations are way too strict. That increases the cost of housing, which is reflected on how much the rent is or how much it costs to purchase these places. That, to me, is the thing, is make housing more affordable, then housing will become more affordable. The Landlords Association, you know, I understand that they want to charge rents that are commensurate with the market, the most they can get. These are people who live off of this, that's their income, whatever. You know, but just because the value of a house went up doesn't mean you should charge more rent. more rent for that. I can't do anything about how people regard their own property or how much they charge on that. What I can do is make sure that builders are free to build, to take care of the housing problem without relying upon some government program, which of course takes funding and then it doesn't have funding and whatever. It gets extraordinarily complicated. I'd like to free it up.
Thank you, Tony. Andrew, you ready?
Yeah, this is certainly a problem in Billings like it is in many, many communities around the state and around the country. I think one of the things that we need to take a look at, and it is looked at periodically, but we have a lot of zoning rules that date back decades and decades and decades. And so we need to look at how we can mix things up a little bit, make sure that we can do mixed use or you can have some commercial residential build up and do some actual infill, which is talked about a lot, that we're not actually executing on it very well. I think another thing that we need to do to make sure that we can really put some affordable housing out there is, I've heard a lot of discussions in some forums about, what are we going to do with the unused city owned land in Billings? Well, one of the great ideas that's going on, that's already been approved by council, which is fantastic, is donating a piece of Wilson Park to the animal shelter project. So that's fantastic. I think things like that can be done for housing as well. So you can take a look at some unused land that the city owns, partner with some developers, and make sure that they can really execute on delivering some affordable housing. It's going to take a lot of creative solutions. Those are just a couple ideas. But I think one thing that's really important is making sure that we get a lot of people at the table and look at what other communities have done that have worked.
To Cassie.
Something that I think is really special about Billings is all of our different neighborhoods seem to have their own feel and people are able to choose where they want to live, of course priced accordingly, based on the type of neighborhood that they want to live in. We're also seeing a ton of really great neighborhood studies being done and task force working together to gather what those neighborhoods are going to look like into the future. So as those discussions are being had, I do think it's important that the city steps in and makes zoning, changes or recommendations based on the goals of those neighborhoods and the needs of our city as far as housing goes and affordable housing. And then I also know that we aren't the first town or city to ever face this problem. And there are many other places in the country that have done creative things to start to solve the housing crisis that a lot of America is facing. And so I would love to see council learning more from our fellow hundred thousand to two hundred thousand size communities across the country.
Now, possibly with David.
You know, for more affordable rental opportunities, I think it's a it's a two pronged attack. It's existing homes and then it's new construction. For existing homes, we have to keep working with the state legislature, right? Keep property taxes low for long term renters, as low as possible to help keep rents down. The trajectory of that property tax drives rental rates. We have to treat them like primary residents rather than short term business opportunities. We need to shine a light on landlords that take unfair advantage of their renters and disincentivize their behaviors. And I believe we have to start a dialogue with some of the larger businesses in town and help them figure out ways to deploy their resources to help their employees. For new homes, we have to reduce the cost of code compliance. We need to reduce overhead red tape that adds time and costs to construction. We have to take a hard look at zoning and find opportunities for more mixed use and higher occupancy. But most of all, I think we need to work with stakeholders. The city council are not the experts when it comes to affordable housing. You know, many of these ideas are why I was endorsed by the Billings Association of Realtors.
Yeah, housing has gone up forty percent the last five years in Billings. We don't have enough, and what we have is too expensive. What the city council can do is try to get our city staff to fast track permitting inspections. We need to probably reduce parking requirements. We should use our TIF districts to encourage the housings. The kind of housing I would like to see involves accessory dwelling units or granny flats or mother in law apartments, because they can be put up very quickly. But we also need zoning for single room occupancy, shared housing, and mixed commercial residential developments.
Are you ready?
Yes, I am, like I say, mother of five. One is in the Air Force in Okinawa, one is married with a baby, and the others three are with me to give an apartment together. And I think that's really fantastic. I bought my house twenty one years ago for eighty eight thousand dollars. Yeah. Today, it markets at two hundred thirty to two hundred fifty. And there is no way I could have afforded that at my kids' age. I was a mother, young mother of two and a half kids. And it was, it was a defining moment, you know, for us as young adults, right? I can't even imagine that opportunity being present for my kids right now. So they're looking at getting an apartment together, which is hard enough as it is. So my my vision is to look at infill and look at our pockets of light and how can we develop those? I envision pockets of tiny home communities, maybe six to eight homes in each pocket around around the city or in those blighted areas. Not only would that create life in that area, but it would also reduce crime because it's occupied, it's cared for, intended, and loved. So that I would love to sit at the table with our developers and see what that looks like, if that's feasible, it's also very economic and good for community. Thank you.
I always think about incentives. If you are a builder in the city of Billings, what is the incentive to go out and build? And where is your greatest return going to come from? So when it comes to city government, really, the role of city government is to identify roadblocks and remove those, and then also to provide incentives for people who are enterprising enough, who see an opportunity and see that they might be able to get some kind of tax increment financing from the city of Billings. I was at a city council meeting a few weeks ago where a gentleman has been working on a project in downtown Billings, which is in severe need of housing. And he came up and because of market and COVID and supply chains and everything, their costs have gone up and they've had to go back to the bank and they've had to go to all of these different stakeholders. And he came asking for a small extension to being able to finalize this project with the city. And he was met with derision and he was met with judgment and he was met with a council frankly that was very hostile to him. And when you're talking about somebody who is looking at investing eight million dollars of their own money into the city of Billings to create housing, we should be working as diligently as possible to enable those people and not to make those people feel like the city of Billings is hostile for that. So more more tax increment financing and public private partnerships as well.
Thank you all so much. So moving on to our final question, we want to leave some time for some audience Q and A. So we're all gonna go Amy, Cassie, Andrew, Mark, Patrick, David, and with Tony. I'm back to you. So for our final question, if elected, how will you prioritize the maintenance, safety, and accessibility of our city's parks, trails, and green spaces? And what investments or improvements do you believe are most urgently needed?
So I am a huge champion for our green spaces and our trails. I grew up as a youth in Pioneer Park. My kids grew up at Spring Creek Park with ducks and the creek was precious because that's right across from my house. And these green spaces are vital to not only maintaining our current family population, but also attracting further talent to our community. I would make it a top priority. And while funding with our budget deficit could put all of this on the chopping block, I believe that we can, as pro collaborator, that's my job, we can come together with civic groups, religious groups, PTAs, like just like I just said, we can come together and collaborate and create opportunities to maintain these spaces as we get through this budget deficit crisis and potentially grow more opportunity from that root issue.
Thank you so much.
Part of the reason that the Heights is a hidden gem is because of all of its amazing outdoor space. If you haven't spent time in Dover Park or Lake Elmo or Castle Rock Park or Alkali Creek lately, you're missing out on some really great outdoor areas in your backyard. So come up to the Heights for a little day trip. Just this morning, I was dropping my son off, actually goes to preschool at the little preschool that's at Dover Park, which is a sweet opportunity for littles to be outside all day. And I was talking to Carolyn, who runs the Yellowstone River Parks Association. And what I was realizing is, yeah, a lot of those spaces that I just mentioned that are in the Heights aren't actually operated by the city. And it's because there are other groups of people that are coming together to really care about those that land, especially as we're going to have to start making cuts with the city budget. And so just piggybacking off of Amy, partnering with those organizations who really care about the land and opening it up to people like you to let you know that there are opportunities to engage and keep those things alive as well is going to be a very important step when we start talking about, you know, yeah, whether we're cutting another park caretaker or another police officer, you know, that is going to be our decisions to be had and no one wants to make them. So yeah, setting that up ahead of time. Thank you. Thank you, Cassie. Go with Andrew.
Yeah, the Heights parks are great. I grew up there before the water park existed and so, but I used to play around in that area a lot. We called it the mini grims. And there was a lot of questionable things going on before our parents could track us on our phones, but it was a lot of fun. And I live in Ward Four and we have amazing trails and parks in Ward Four. And I've been asked sometimes like, well, what are your priorities for Ward Four? When it comes to parks and trails, I mean, I would say that actually my priorities are the rest of Billings. Like being on council, you represent where you're from, but you also need to try to make Billings a better place for everybody. So I think that we need to make sure that we're investing in this around the city. We need to look at parks like infrastructure, they're important to the infrastructure, they're important to public safety, to make sure that we have well taken care of parks. And earlier tonight, during the mayoral forum, there was a couple of people that commented about partnering with our legislators that go to Helena, and that's super important because one of the things that we've lost access to as a city is the ability to have park maintenance districts. And that would be a huge help to making sure that we can fund the care and the maintenance of parks. I think with all of the investment from a commercial perspective in Billings, we also can again get a lot of partnership from businesses to help fund these things and make sure that we've got maintenance. And then Billings really is that place that we can recruit people to and that everybody enjoys every day.
Thank you, Andrew. Passing back over to Mark. The light shuffled.
So parks are important. After providing public safety, the city has to make itself a place where people want to live. And neighborhood parks, trails for walking, biking, horseback riding, recreational facilities are a big part of making the city a place where people want to live. Unfortunately, right now, we are stuck between the legislature's tax reform law and the city charter's mill in Harpless. And the recent park levy failed two to one. And voters are going to increase their taxes. I think the way forward now is to maintain what we have. But for heaven's sakes, let's not cancel any park or trail appointments. We might have to delay them until we get other funding. But we shouldn't cancel them.
Thank you. Over to Patrick.
I don't think anybody can say that they are an advocate of public safety if they don't also believe in the enormous and outsized importance of having clean, safe, and well lit public spaces for people to recreate in. I don't think that anybody can say that they care about economic development and bringing new talent to our city if they don't think that we need to have a well connected trail system and opportunities for young professionals coming into Billings to evaluate and say, yeah, this is the kind of place that I want to raise my family. I don't think that you can say that you believe in affordable housing if you don't have a good park system. And so I think that we need to find the will to, as I think Amy really said so well, find more than just city government, but ways to create community inside of our community, engaging with civic organizations, engaging with religious organizations, and engaging with the idea that we have an obligation to one another. If we want to have a thriving community, it takes all of us and not just eleven people on an elected city government board.
Passing back over to David.
You know, I want to say as many parks and trails as you can afford, right? Parks are one of those things that allow you to be able to bring more folks into our neighborhoods. But we are in this reality where we're going to have to find partnerships just like everyone else has described. You know, part of this question was, where do you see one urgent need? You know, and I don't think I would be representing Ward One well if I didn't say, we don't have enough green spaces in the downtown core, right? We had some opportunities that disappeared on us using other people's money. Why don't we take a look as we're building these multi use areas or our multi occupancy and put some requirements on some of those builders to help us with more green spaces in our downtown core?
Thank you, David. And finally, Tony.
Thank you. So let me ask you a question. How many people here would like to be wealthy enough to buy a round for everybody in the house? Who would like to be wealthy enough to do that? I see a lot of hands. How many of you are wealthy enough to do that? It's a matter of money. You see, as Mike Boyet said, there are tons of things that problems that face the city. If they were easy, they would have been done already. The problem with funding parks or police department or anything else, affordable housing, is that we don't have the money. It all comes down to the money. If you can't afford it, the city can't either because the city is you. I heard the new parks director say something that I really, really was happy to hear. He said, and it wasn't that. He said that they don't want, he doesn't want to acquire anything else that they can't maintain. Deferred maintenance is the most expensive way of managing property that there is. The parks don't belong to the city, they belong to you, okay? We would, the city would be happy to maintain them, expand them. It all come down to money. So many people simply don't have the money in taxes. The fact that your house increases from eighty eight thousand to two hundred thirty thousand, so the property tax goes up. Your income hasn't gone up because of that. It's not like income tax where you earn more, you pay more, it's that you have that liability.
I'll have to cut you off there, Tony, but thank you for your time.
I get too emotional.
And thank you all for answering our prepared questions. Just really having the opportunity. So we are switching up our silly game. We're going to do a rapid response once again so we have enough time for our audience Q and A. I was going to make you all do two truths and a lie. So we're just gonna go from David, Ward One, down to Ward Five. So just changes to our schedule. Yes, no time to think. Just to remind everyone, while we're doing rapid response, to write down your audience questions for the candidates. And again, Perry and Katie will come around and take them. We're really excited to see what questions you have. Okay, here we go. What is one item you can't live without?
I can't live without my bicycle.
I can't live without my Olympus thirty five RC film camera.
As much as I hate to say it, probably my cell phone, work from there, connect with people there.
I can't live without my Shaw collection.
I can't live without my turntable and records.
I can't live without my turntable and records.
I cannot live without coffee.
Good question. The thing that I cannot live without is the hope I have in Jesus Christ.
Next question. I'll say this could be controversial, so remember, few words. Is a hot dog a sandwich?
Only if it's in a tortilla.
No.
My two-year-old eats it from the side, so I suppose.
Hot dogs are icky.
I have no idea why I think this burger is not a sandwich.
Only if you're from Chicago.
There are different ways of looking at things. I love dogsies.
I'm really curious about this one. What is your favorite coffee shop in Billings?
I think it would be my very own espresso.
Black Dog Coffee.
Formerly Harper &amp; Martin's.
105 Brewing in the Heights.
Masavo.
Black Dog at Roots.
Black Dog at 24th.
Now at the Masito.
As I say, we have so little time, but as a former Black Dog barista, I love the spectrum. Your favorite sweet treat?
Cherry pie.
Batlava from Mediterranean Soul.
Scoop of Big Dipper ice cream.
Baskin Robbins peanut butter chocolate ice cream.
Will Cox's Graham Slam. If you don't know, go find out.
Pretty much anything chocolate, I'm hopelessly addicted.
My favorite I had this morning is pastries from Veronika's Downtown. She's Russian-Ukrainian, a wonderful lady.
If you had to get a tattoo in five minutes, what would you get?
Mom.
Do not resuscitate.
What are my kids' names, I suppose? Well, as a tattoo, it's very serious. I have four, so I've already planned my next one. C. Sequeney, which is the battle cry for Dolores Woodhouse. I have a lot of tattoos already, but maybe vote on my knuckles?
I have a picture of a smiley face on a sticky note that my older son drew for me that I've been meaning to get tattooed on me, so that's probably my next one.
Years ago, my son, after five years in the Marine Corps, asked me if I would get a tattoo with him. We didn't do it, but if I was going to do it, it would be a Marine Corps people go with me.
Dogs or cats?
Meow.
Dogs.
Dogs. I am your deranged cat lady.
It's got to be dogs.
Dogs all the way.
What's your favorite kid and gem in Billings?
The veterans of foreign wars post in the Heights.
Mediterranean Soul.
Dover Park.
Dover Park.
I still think, I'm just going to give another shout out to 105 Brewing in the Heights. Go check it out. Montana Outlaw Barbecue at the end of First Sabanay North. They're open for lunch Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and they're the best barbecue I've ever had in my entire life.
You know, I really like that I discovered one day the water right behind Shields is just an amazing, quiet place to go and just relax, look at the scenery, so thank you.
What do you think the rainbow would taste like? The rainbow?
I don't think it's dark skis. Smell of the ice cream, of course.
My kids are on a rainbow sprinkles kick. Sparkles and dreams.
As a kid, I didn't get ice cream, it's probably like it so much right now, but I would get rainbow sherbet, so that's probably what it tastes like.
Anybody who's lived in Billings for long enough knows that the rainbow tastes like cheap liquor and regret.
Introduce my Irish heritage. Whenever I see a rainbow, I think of the pot of gold at the end of it. I do.
Would you time travel to the past or the future?
I think I would time travel to the future. Right, you always want to know, you know, how your kids and your grandkids did. I prefer to time travel at the rate I'm traveling right now.
I'd go to the future, I'm excited about it.
I'd go to the past, I would love to meet my ancestors.
Like Marty the Fly, I'd go to the past. I think I'd go to the future. I would go to the past, I know a little bit about it. I wouldn't feel as lost as I do in the future.
Would you rather be underdressed or overdressed?
I think I'd rather be overdressed because then you can always take stuff off. The great thing about being overdressed is that, you know, a guy puts on a sports coat, everybody starts calling him sir.
I'd rather be underdressed in my own style. I'm usually underdressed.
I'd rather be overdressed. I agree with Dave, you can always change that.
I'd rather be overdressed as well.
Over.
True Montana survivalists. And last, we're going to go in the same way as the mayors. Do you like the smell of sugar beets?
Like the mayor, sugar beets represent money for our community. I gotta agree, the smell of sugar beets cooking is John Hobson life.
I don't love the smell that much. I don't love it, but it's nostalgic. My family members helped to harvest those sugar beets.
Yeah, I love what it represents, but I don't like the smell.
Yeah, it smells like nostalgia and I wish they smelled better.
How they can get that sweet sugar out of those ugly beets is just amazing to me. I love the sweet, but you got to put up with the bad smell.
Thank you so much for our rapid fire questions, going on to our audience Q and A. Well, Anthony's at 60 seconds, so Trish will have us on time. And? No, I will not make you start again. We'll start with Mark, go Amy, Patrick, Tony, Andrew, Cassie, and we'll end with you. What is your position on a non-discrimination ordinance?
I'm in favor of a non-discrimination.
Having spent my whole life lending my voice to those who walk on the margins, I will support the NDO.
I had an opportunity in 2014 to read a letter from then-Governor Bullock to a crowd gathered outside of the church downtown in favor of the NDO encouraging and being in its support. It's 2025, I can't believe we don't have one yet already. I am unequivocally way over here, yes.
Are there any former legislators here? I didn't see anybody that I recognized, thank you. As any legislator knows, it depends on the detail, exactly what's written, how it's written, what the hidden things on something are. So I would defer on that until I would see it. However, I would say this, it is not the role of government to legitimize or delegitimize any or any group of people.
Give me my mic, Pat. Yeah, this is, when I, when people would ask me, why did I want to run for city council? One of the reasons is because I remember when the first NDO failed, and I thought it was a huge mistake. There's nothing that that would have done that would have hurt anybody, but it would have protected a lot of people. So I'm absolutely in support of an NDO.
On the economic development side of things, if we want an opportunity to bring new talent and new people into Billings to start businesses, work in our jobs, then it's an important piece of what we need in our city.
I believe that there are lots of laws out there that help protect against discrimination at the federal and at the state level, but I would take as a city council person and look at any legislation that's brought in front of it. And if an NDO is one of those, then I would be required to take a look and make some decisions based on what I see.
Thank you all. We're going to start with this next question. We'll go Tony, Andrew, Cassie, David, Mark, Amy, Patrick. How do you feel about rent control?
If the free market is allowed to operate and operate efficiently, then there's no need for rent control. Government is a fearsome taskmaster. I really don't like trusting the government for anything, especially when they control anything at all.
I'm going to be honest and say, I don't know enough about rent control to really say much about it. But I would say this, I think that it's very clear that inside of Billings, and really any community, there are definitely landlords that are taking advantage of their tenants. That is true. So whatever we could do to help make changes to that, I'd be in support of. And yeah, as far as rent control, I'd certainly like to learn more.
Kick the words out of my mouth. I think this is an area where I don't have enough information to give a really solid opinion, but as I mentioned earlier, there are a lot of communities who have faced similar issues, have tried different things, and it's important to see what's worked and what hasn't worked in those communities.
When I talked about affordable housing earlier, I talked about holding landlords accountable. I absolutely agree that that's the first step to bringing rents down. Those places that have tried rent control have some challenges, so like the others, I would need to spend a lot more time looking at what the impacts are in both directions. I am frankly suspicious of rent controls. I think that it would discourage people from rebuilding more housing, and I think there's a lot of ways to accomplish affordable housing.
One of the moms that I've worked with was given housing in the form of half of a single white trailer. So the one bedroom was converted into two tiny, tiny rooms, and she was charged $1,100 for that living space, and that is obscene. I don't believe government control of rent is the right way, though I would love to sit and talk with experts further on that, but I believe that what she was being charged is obscene and frankly inhumane.
You know, as somebody who is not a homeowner and does rent here in this marketplace, I feel acutely the pressure of rising rents. I think that it all goes back to incentives, and if we disincentivize people from building because they perceive that they won't be able to charge a fair market rent, then that's just going to continue to drive rents higher for people. I think that we need to have systems that offer better incentives for people to be able to build more housing. When you have a higher supply, then there is demand, and that will by default lower costs on rent. So I do think that some government intervention may be appropriate, but I don't think that unilaterally slapping rent control on builders or landlords is the answer.
Thank you all so much. For our final audience question, we're just going to go from Tony, Ward Five, down to David, Ward One. So what ideas do you have to incentivize me to stay here? Safety alone will not keep me here. Have you considered art, recreation, opportunity, education, things that will help me grow and thrive?
Interesting question. So the answer to that would be to ask people who are coming here, who are leaving, why they're doing that. When I moved here 32 years ago, the number one place that people were moving from to come to Billings was Denver. Conversely, the number one location, place that people were going to after they left Billings was Denver. It's like this love-hate relationship with Denver. So in order to answer that, it's a great question, but we'd have to, it's not for us to decide, it's for the people who are actually doing that. Why would they want to stay here? What's causing them to leave? Great question. I don't know the answer.
I think it's a brilliant question. I think, again, like I said, my political philosophy, and it might be rose colored sunglasses, is that we have an obligation to one another. And as a community, the way that we make a community the place that we want to live is by getting people invested in the idea that frankly, we are the best community in the state of Montana. We're not the largest on accident. It didn't just happen. I think we have outsized resources and there is so much abundance in this community. And so in drawing people to this community, I think that we just need to have a vision and a belief that we are the best place to live in Montana, that we have the best opportunities for people to be able to start, grow, and thrive in business, and that it's a safe place for families to be as well. So I think it starts with all of us and not just people sitting up here on the stage.
Well, first of all, I would just say, I think Billings is a great place as it is right now. I think we've got amazing places like this business right here, others that we've talked about all night. I think that we've got an arts community and a music community that's amazing. We have great restaurants and amazing chefs. You know, so I think Billings honestly is a great place as it is right now. I think it's also an extremely diverse place, as was mentioned, not just in terms of what people might look like, but also political beliefs. And, you know, it's been talked about that this is a nonpartisan, these are nonpartisan positions, it's a nonpartisan race. I think that's fantastic. And so, you know, I think it's great to see Billings just continue to grow and thrive with spaces really for everybody.
So I spent four years on the Human Relations Commission to the city council, and we had innovative ideas on how to continue to grow Billings in a way that reflects the cultural diversity. And I want to continue looking at that mission, because I think we are an incredibly diverse community, and we just don't celebrate that enough. I would really love to sit down with you and ask you what you would like to see in this community. I want that feedback. And then how can I, as a representative, support that vision for you? I myself, like I say, want to continue to grow and celebrate our diversity and have spaces that reflect that, but fully supportive of arts and music and bar scenes, you know, papier and papier. But I want to hear from you, what you want to see from Billings, and I want to be that person to help you visualize that.
A few days ago, my husband and I went on a little date night to the Alberta Bear to a comedy show, and the improviser at the beginning asked the audience to shout out words that remind them or what they think of first when someone says the word "Billings." And what the improvisers heard yell back at them were things like meth, pot shops, unsafe streets. And I hate that. I hate that there's, you know, hundreds of people in an auditorium, and those are the words that are coming out of our mouths. And so I think we honestly have a messaging problem around Billings. We do have a lot of amazing things in town. And so switching that messaging, so people inside Billings can feel proud of the amenities that we do have, will ultimately help grow the city in the long run. the city in the long run, in the direction we want it to go.
To be a community of people want to live in, we have to have jobs, we have to have opportunities to grow businesses, and we have to have neighborhoods where you can raise a family. We have to have parks so kids can ride their bicycles to the parks. Maybe we have the trails we have, and we need to have them expanded. We need to have access to the great outdoors. It has to be a fun town. Morgan, I think to, to keep you here, we need to give you a sense of, of hope for the future. We need to give you opportunities to know that you can, you can thrive and reap the benefits of our community. As a city councilperson, you know, it's the responsibility to make sure we tear down those things that get in your way, right? We need to enable you to be able to find the passions and those things that you would thrive on, allow you to participate in those fully, contribute to the community. So I, I think it's about building hope for the future.
Thank you all. Thank you all again for coming, for all the consideration and time and questions, and I'll pass it back to Perry for some last-minute details.
Okay, stick with me for one more minute. Sorry we went over, but I do have some important information to give you all. That was awesome, even more than I expected. Thank you all so, so much for coming. We said it before, but you guys being willing to show up for people is the first step, and we just really appreciate your time and energy tonight. Okay, so Forward Montana will be sending up a follow-up email with important dates for the upcoming election on November 4th. Katie is at our table over there, if you'd like to sign up for our email. We're going to send a follow-up with this, we're going to have recording, we've been recording this forum, so we'll have it on our website and our YouTube. So please, sign up. If you have not already, be sure to visit all the tables that are here tonight, they have some great information. Ballots drop starting October 15th, so be on the lookout and contact your county elections office if you don't get it by October 22nd. Regular polling places will not be open, so you are voting by mail. You can either mail it, or you can drop it at the elections office. A quick update about the ballot this year that you all should know and pass on to other people. Due to a change in law on your ballot envelope this year, you will be required, required to write your birth year on the ballot, which has been a little confusing for people. And due to this change, people are expecting more rejected ballots. So just make sure, it's usually signature and a date, and right below signature, it's going to say birth year. Make sure you write your birth year and not 2025. To that end, we encourage you to check out my voter portal, to which there is a link in your bags, there's a QR code and a link to how to check out my voter portal. You can check your voter registration status and the status of your ballot, so you know if it got accepted, rejected, if you need to fix anything. And then regular voter registration just closed on Monday at 5:00 PM, so if you've not registered, please come to our tables and register to vote. And then if you do need to do it after Monday, you can register in person at the local elections office up until election day. Couple more things, okay. Forward Montana, we have postcards of our voter guide that's going to be online, so does League of Women Voters. We're going to have a printed voter guide, but please check out our online voter guide. Some of the candidates have answered questions, and it's also going to explain some different things about what's going to be on your ballot. And also, please, please, please reach out to these people and to our mayor candidates that came tonight. Again, these are local, everyday citizens running for office because they care about our community, so talk to them, have coffee with them. Make sure you cast your vote. And lastly, thank you again so much for your participation, it shows your passion for our community. So I appreciate you guys. The more people who are engaged and have passion for our community, the better, right? We all want what's best for Billings and our community. And thank you so much again to Thirsty Street Brewing for letting us be here tonight. Tip your bartender. And that can be for more. Thank you.